The June 10th School Committee Meeting. It's a lot of people here. Welcome, everyone. I'm having a hard time seeing the school committee members. So if I could actually, if you're not a school committee member, superintendent, assistant superintendent, if you could actually just have your name up there until you're ready to speak, that would be really helpful so that I can do the votes. Thank you. We appreciate that. Thanks, everybody. That's really helpful. It's just hard to do votes. I'm trying to see through everyone's pictures. Thanks, everyone. That's really helpful. Okay, Tristan, all school committee members are here?
I'm trying to hold for the list. Sorry, their names keep jumping. So I'm having a hard time keeping track.
Then we're all here. I can see everyone.
Okay, thanks, David.
Thank you, David. And if everyone could actually take their picture off, unless you are a school committee member, that would be helpful if you know how to do that. You can go to stop video, I think. Thanks, everyone. All right, Tristan, everyone is here. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the flag for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, evening. We will start with approval of items by consensus. Item 3A, we have approval of minutes, May 27, 2020. Is there a motion? Thank you, Mrs. Burns, seconded by Mr. Samaha. All in favor? That is unanimous. Thank you. Next, we have some warrants, G423, R232, FS37, L72, and L73. Is there a motion? Thank you, Mr. Samaha, seconded by Mrs. Newhouse. Thank you. All in favor? Excellent. Tristan, that's unanimous. We have payroll endings, 6/8/2020. Is there a motion? Thank you, Mrs. Burns, seconded by Mr. Fenelly.
I think it was 6/3/2020.
Oh, thank you. 6/3/2020. Is there a motion? We're good. Mr. Ragsdale, seconded by Mrs. Burns. All in favor? Steve, are you in favor? That is, thank you, unanimous. And finally, we have warrants sped 24. Is there a motion? Mrs. Samaha, seconded by Mr. Fenelly. All in favor? There's two abstentions, Tristan.
Thank you.
Thank you. Excellent. All right. Next up, I know I saw Sean Neville out there. So Sean, if you could actually come back so we could see you again, that would be great. We are delighted to recognize and honor Sean this evening. Hi, Sean. Well, this was meant for our March meeting. We couldn't see you go without a proper goodbye. Sean Work is the executive director of WCTV for just over four years. During that time, he not only managed day-to-day operations, worked with the Board of Directors to take steps towards the station's strategic vision, but maintained strong community connections. During his tenure, WCTV expanded the youth program through social media reach and expanded programming everywhere from community events to podcasts. In March, Sean began in a communications role at a nonprofit specializing in hospice care. On behalf of the school committee, we are grateful for your support of our district, our community, and the many students you've mentored over the years. Here to say a bit more about our honored guest is Hayden Kane. So Hayden, if you could make sure you're visible, that would be great. Hi, Hayden. Thank you.
Hi, thank you for having me. I'd like to thank Sean for all he's done for the station, most of which goes without saying. Personally, he was a big advocate for the intern program, which allows high schoolers such as myself to learn video production skills, such as writing, producing, and editing. Some of our interns know what they want to go into, know that they want to go into media as a career. Some know they don't, and some are still deciding. But no matter what route they decide to go, we know that we've been set up with the skills and experience to succeed in the field. From a school perspective, Sean really enhanced the coverage of Wilmington Public Schools events and always made sure that every single school event was covered and that all sports teams, clubs, and musical groups got their fair share of coverage. When thinking about Sean as a boss, it's almost hard, difficult to do so. He clearly never thought that he was better than any other employee, and when not acquiring pivotal funding for the station, was often seen editing right alongside us. Sean was somebody who everybody knew as the face of WCTV, and that's because it's clear to see how seriously he took his job and how he really wanted to make WCTV a better station as a whole. Without Sean, the station would look and operate wildly differently than it does today, and it's clear to see that he's left his mark on the station, its employees, and Wilmington. I'm sure that I can speak for every intern when I say that. Sean was a great person to work with, and he'll be missed by all of us.
Thank you, Hayden.
Thank you, Hayden. That was excellent. Thank you so much. Sean, thank you for all you did to keep our community engaged and informed, and we would officially like to welcome the new executive director, Ryan Maliar. I don't think he's here, but we do welcome him. We've missed seeing you, and if any other school committee members would like to say anything, please do so now. Mr. Fenelly?
I mean, listen, I can't add anything that anybody hasn't said already, but you know, most of you guys know that, you know, not only working with Sean through the school committee, but I served on the Board of Directors at WCTV for two years, and I can't say enough great things about the leadership you provided to the station and to the staff. And you know, we're going to miss you around town, but thank you for all of your contributions and everything you did for the station and for the community as a whole.
Thank you, Jesse.
Thank you, Sean.
Mrs. Burns?
Granted, I think everyone's covered everything, especially Hayden. But Sean, I really, I too have to echo the sentiments of Hayden and Jesse in saying that the enhancement of what you brought to WCTV in your tenure with the, with the community television is unsurpassed to some of the bigger league TV stations that we see daily. And I do, I thank you because it's only enhanced our, our coverage and what we do and what, what is around town. And being a part of it, even though we, our schedules may not allow us to be there in person, it really has afforded members of the residents to participate even remotely, you know, in the happenings of this community. And I just thank you for those enhancements because you really, you know, you've got, you're leaving big shoes to fill. So, but, and again, I just wanted to thank you for your commitment to all, to all the organizations in town and, you know, enjoying us proud. So thank you so much for your time.
Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Bjork?
It has all been said so well, Sean, but I will just add this. I've known you a lot longer than four years, and WCTV has been very, very lucky to have you at its helm for the time it has, and I know you're going to go on to great, great things. So thank you for everything you've done.
Thanks, Steve.
Mr. Ragsdale?
I just want to add my personal thanks for making my first time being interviewed on TV not as terrifying as I thought it was going to be. So I'm very grateful for that and will always be.
I don't see anything else. Thank you very much, Sean. We are so glad you could join us. I'm so sorry we couldn't do it in person in March, and we have been, this is a long, a very delayed goodbye and good luck, but we do wish you the best of luck, and we hope you won't be a stranger.
Thank you, of course, and, and you're, you're in good hands these days with Brian and the rest of the crew there. And so I know they'll continue to keep up the good work, and I've seen it over the last few months already. So good luck with all that you do.
Thank you very much, Sean. Congratulations. Thank you again, Hayden.
Thank you, Sean.
Thank you, guys.
All right. Next, item number five, we have recognition of retirees, Dr. Brand.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. As unbelievable as it might be, it is, again, that, that time of the year in which we pause and also take the opportunity to recognize some important people. And for our district, as we're coming very close to the official end of the school year, that includes our retirees. And this year in particular, we have a rather large number of folks who we are sadly saying goodbye to and also sadly saying goodbye to also under these unfortunate circumstances. We have many who are here around the screen this evening and who have taken the time out of their evening to join us. And, and if I may, I'll just say a couple of brief words about each. And perhaps when we get to that person, just so everyone knows who we're talking about, if you could maybe give us, give us a way.
Dr. Brand, can I just stop you for one second?
Sure.
So if you are being recognized and honored right now, if you could make sure your picture is on so that we can see you. And if you are here for public comment or just to watch, if you could actually take your video off for the time being, that helps us to see those who are being recognized.
Thank you. So in sum total, just before I begin, we, we have a total of 21 staff. 21 staff who we will be saying goodbye to at the end of this school year, many of which are here tonight. If my math holds up, the magic number is not 19. It's 471. Collectively, 471 years of service to the community and to the schools of Wilmington do these 21 individuals we owe greatness to for many thanks, many, many years of service. And so alphabetically, starting with those who I believe are in attendance, Jeff Brenner, is Jeff here? There he is. Thank you, Jeff. Jeff has served in the role for 15 years of service to Wilmington as a district school psychologist. I'm off? My math is not, okay.
The department's math is correct. I've been an official employee 15 years, been in the job 34 years in all, which I know most of you met us just through the retirement board, but been in town for 34 years.
Well, thank you, Jeff. Thank you to be corrected like that. And thank you for all of your years of service to education and of course to Wilmington. Carol Conquest, I believe, is here tonight. There's Carol. Carol has, has been with the district for 12 years, all, I believe, at the Woburn Street as art teacher there. And so we are saying goodbye to Carol. Mary Ellen Dennehy is also, I think, here, whereas there she is, also at Woburn Street, not too far down the hall from Carol. And she is wrapping up 16 years of service here in Wilmington as, I think, all as the librarian. Is that right? Also here, I believe, this evening is Marielle Gravalesi. Is Marielle here? Are you here, Marielle? I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm here.
You are, you are on screen three or four, maybe. I'm sorry. I don't see you. But great to hear you. 22 years of service, a long run as well. Having began as a reading teacher at the North and then transferring to the reading teacher at the West in, in 2000. So thank you to Marielle for 22 years of service. Lynn Gordon, I know I saw Lynn. She is here. 24 years of service to Wilmington, beginning as an educational tutor, as I understand it, at the Wildwood in 1996, transferring to the grade-two position at Wildwood in 1999, and then the grade-two, still at the grade-two position to Woburn Street in 2000. So we thank Lynn for, for many, many years of service in a few different schools throughout our district. Sue Hendy, I think I saw. Yes, Sue is here with us. Sue is wrapping up 33 years of service to Wilmington, all, I think, at the Shawshin. Is that right, Sue? Not quite. Sue, could you unmute yourself? Sorry. I'm sorry, Sue.
She's muted.
All right. Sorry, beginning as a phys ed teacher. I have it in my notes. I stand corrected. At the Wildwood in, in 1987, and then eventually ending up at Shawshin for a long run in 1991. Is that right, Sue?
That is correct.
All right. 33 years of service. It's daunting. Ellen Hitchens is, I think, here. Do I, I think, Ellen, is that right? Where's Ellen? Thought I, Ellen.
Yes, I'm here. Hello.
Thank you, Ellen. Thank you for helping out. 12 years of service in Wilmington, beginning as an educational assistant at the high school in 2008, and then transferring to the middle school in 2009. And we thank, we thank Ellen for all of her years. Deb Horning, is Deb with us? Yes. Deb is wrapping up 21 years of service, beginning first as a guidance counselor at the North in 1999 and transferring to the same role at the middle school in 2000. Cheryl Netner is here, Woburn Street. Woburn Street is losing a few gems, for sure. 20 years of service to Wilmington, I think, all in that role. Is that right, Cheryl? How she's done what she's done. I don't know if it's all been in that closet downstairs at the Woburn, but my gosh, that's amazing. Dawn, I think I saw Dawn. Dawn Martel, there she is. Wrapping up all at the high school, 25 years of service to Wilmington Public Schools. And we thank Dawn for all of, all of her service. Next to her, almost literally on the screen, no, she was next to her, but I think she's moved around. Barbara Meddy, who is also here with us this evening. I think that this is our record for tonight. 46, Barbara, 46 years of service to Wilmington versus music teacher and then director. We would give you a standing ovation, Barbara, if we were, but that would not look good on the screen. Thank you for all of your service to the high school and also other schools throughout the district. Sue Miranda is here, I think, right there. 12 years of service. Thank you, Sue, to Wilmington, all, I think, at the sixth grade. Is that right?
Correct. Yes.
Perfect. As a math teacher at the middle school. Maureen Noon is, I believe, also with us here. There she is. Thank you, Maureen. Wrapping up 32, not too far behind, but still a ways to go behind, Barbara. 32 years of service, beginning as a resource room teacher at the Wildwood in 1988, transferring to learning disability specialists at the North in 1996, and then to the role of special education teacher at the middle school in 2000. And so I hope I have all that correct, and thank you, Maureen, so very much for your years of service to the community of Wilmington. Kathleen Quigley is here. I know I saw her. There she is. Thank you, Kathleen. As, after 21 years of service to Wilmington, beginning as an educational tutor, as I understand it, at the Woburn Street in 1999, and becoming the full-time health and phys ed teacher at the North in 2001 for a grand total of 21 years. And I believe last in attendance tonight with us of our retirees this evening, or this year, rather, Leanne Sadowski. Leanne is right there. Wrapping up, she's really close, 32 years of service as second-grade teacher, beginning however as a, sorry, second-grade teacher at Shawshin, but beginning however as a grade-one teacher at the Shawshin, first before transferring to that role. I do not want to leave anybody out. Is there any of our retirees here who I did not mention or did not introduce? And I don't know how, how will I do this? Let's see. Can you raise your, do we have everybody? I sure hope we, we do. Let me, though, if I may, just also, for the sake of our committee and community briefly, also acknowledge those that were not able to be in here, be here tonight in attendance. Ms. Martha Brandsfield, 12 years of service to Wilmington at the, most recently at the middle school as a language-based educational assistant. Martha began in the language-based classroom at the Woburn before transferring to the North and then to the middle school. So we thank Martha for her 12 years. Eileen Castello, West Cafeteria Manager, after 25 years of service to Wilmington. Diane Ferguson, an educational assistant at the Boutwell, after 31 years of service. Patricia Murray, who, 21 years of service at Wilmington, most recently as the administrative assistant in the middle, at the middle school. And Patricia Maroney, Shawshin second-grade teacher after 21 years of service. What an amazing feat, truly, truly, I mean that, the amount of service representative of what I've come to learn in my time here in Wilmington of the dedication and the commitment that so many of our staff have. When they come, they don't leave, and we benefit, the community benefits from that. Thank you all. We, we do have a plaque for you that I think Tristan helped me out is, you'll be on its way. We are so sorry we couldn't do this in person, but on behalf of the Wilmington community, thank you and wish you all the very best and happiness in your retirement. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Tristan, can you, don't go yet. I just want to make sure the school committee doesn't want to say anything, but I will quickly say, if you're not on mute, if you can mute yourself, that would be very, very helpful. If you're not on mute, if you can mute.
We have a couple people that just joined. I can't mute. So if you have just joined the meeting, please do mute yourself. Thank you.
Everyone, I know it's very tricky, but it does make it hard for us to be here in Kentucky business. Thank you. Congratulations to all of our retirees. We are so grateful for your dedication and commitment to student-earning. We wish you all the best for a much deserved, happy retirement. With honor to be sitting here on Zoom, your presence and your expertise and your incredible dedication to members. Anyone like to say anything? Mr. Bjork?
Yeah, I'd just like to say congratulations to everyone. But I'd also like to say, Ms. Meddy, with your retirement, there's only one of my former educators left in the system. That's, I'm very, very, very sorry to see you go. And there's a number of people here who have aided the brood of children. And I'd like to say to each and every one of you, I'm sorry. I hope that my children aren't the reason that you're, Joe's retirement, but in all, in all seriousness and sincerity, thank you for all the dedication, compassion, and wonderful service that you've given this town of Wilmington.
Thank you, Mr. Bjork. Any else? Mr. Samaha?
I just want to thank everybody for their service. It's, you know, it's, it's, Wilmington's got such a, in my opinion, a great school system, and you all putting in the time is really what, one of the things that's made it that great. I also want to say a special thank you to, to Ms. Meddy. I know that she's, for my own children, for my son in particular. You know, she's done so much for the music program and really helped inspire him for music as well. And I can't thank you enough for your, for your, your dedication and whatever it is that you do that gets him in line unlike anybody I've ever met. So I just, from the bottom of my heart, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Samaha. Mr. Ragsdale?
I don't want to echo Jay and Steve too much, but the, the most important thing in a good education is a great teacher. And the, just the number of years that you have all served and the hundreds and hundreds and hundreds, you know, collectively thousands of students that you've served, there, there are no words to describe the, the difference that you made in their lives. And thank you for being educators. Thank you for the time you spent in Wilmington.
Thank you, Mr. Ragsdale. All right. Excellent. It is such an honor and such a pleasure to have you here. You are more than welcome to stay for the entirety of our meeting if you would like to. However, we understand if you would like to move on to some other things this evening, so we won't be insulted if you, if you sign off. But it's lovely to see you and congratulations again. Thank you so much.
Thanks, everybody. I do have one more room with the students.
All right. Thank you. Dr. Brand, that brings us to superintendent's report.
Thank you. Good evening. Actually, just one item under the superintendent's report, given that most is, is going to be addressed under COVID-19 update under new business. I just wanted to let the community know very briefly that later this evening, there will be a survey going out to all parents and guardians with a specific effort to try and gather some information and feedback around remote learning and school reopening. As we soon bring this year to a close, and obviously this time period, it seems like an opportune time, an important time, to try and gather a little bit of, a little bit of feedback that might be helpful and informative for us, not so much with a view to the past, but more to a view to the possibility of, of the future in the fall. So please look for that survey coming out later this evening. It will be my intention to have that window closed next, the middle of next week, specifically with the effort to have those results come back to the community at the next and last school committee meeting of the year in later June. So again, for all of our families out there watching, please watch for that email coming out later this evening. And that's it right now under the superintendent's report.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Oh, Mrs. Burns?
Dr. Brand, just a quick question. Will that survey also be accessible on the website?
We will, we will indeed, yes. We will post the link for that website on the website. And I will, for those followers, I will also send a link out on Twitter.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Burns. Any other questions? Okay. All right. The next item on our agenda is public comment. And let me just review how, how this works. We have quite a few public comments tonight. I believe there were eight submitted. And so I will call each participant's name in order of their comment submission. We'll start with those who are here, and then we will then, we'll then read the ones that were sent in. You'll be unmuted by the school committee reporting secretary, Tristan Dixie, to make your comment. Please make sure to state your name and address. And as a reminder to the committee and the public, as per our policy, those making public comments are given three minutes maximum, and we usually don't answer questions or begin a dialogue. Thank you very much for being here and participating in our public comment section. We do appreciate your engagement and your thoughtfulness. So first on my list, I have Dave Tasto. So Dave, if you can unmute, and you can show your photo, that was your video. That was great. Thank you, Dave. You're up. Please state your name and address for the record. Thank you.
Hi, thanks. Dave Tasto, live at 140 Chestnut Street, Wilmington. We are all here as we want the best for our town and our children. During this particularly difficult time, we have the opportunity to change the course of education in Wilmington in a major way. It can be our chance to come together as a broad community and institute innovative ways to educate our students, whether they are learning in a classroom or at home. I see a 2021, 2020, 21 school year in which all students have a chance to learn as they're able to and grow socially and academically in an environment that honors our teachers, staff, and administration as essential employees. If work, if required to work full-time, we are obliged to seek any and all means to provide teachers with the resources, training, and at-home support needed to carry out their mission to educate and develop students academically, socially, and emotionally, to be active civic-minded contributors to our global society. What training is needed ahead of this fall to have a best-in-class remote learning system for each student, regardless of ability or home situation? How might we proactively seek state and state funds to provide childcare for teachers should schools close as a, as our healthcare workers had, you know, this spring? How might we partner with our teachers' association to have a model agreement in place for amazing in-school and in-home education experience for teachers, students, staff, and parents? Let's plan for a large portion of next school year to be a remote learning experience and make it the best it can ever be. If we are fortunate to start this school, start school this fall in classrooms, I am confident that our teachers will, will provide a superb learning environment when we have a maximum student-to-teacher ratio of 10 to 1. There'll be many decisions needed in the next few months. I commend the committee members, the school administration, and town leaders for their hard work today. And I support you, and all of you, in making the difficult decisions and trade-offs likely required to uphold our mission and have a model school system in Wilmington. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Ursula Tasto. There, Ursula?
Yep. Going after him is a hard. Ursula Tasto, 140 Chestnut Street, Wilmington as well. So the last three months have been really challenging, and as Dave mentioned, it's really remarkable to see all the extra F's. So the last three months have been really challenging. And as Dave mentioned, it's really remarkable to see all the extra effort being put in by the administration, teachers, parents, and students. This next school year will be extremely challenging, and it'll require the whole community to come together proactively to close those gaps. We need a robust plan put in place so that teachers and schools educate our children to a typical yearly standard. A requirement of a single Zoom class per week, as we had in the last three months, is insufficient. We need to work with the teachers association to get the same education and work standards that were in place when everyone was in the classroom while providing teachers with the right support, tools, and training to achieve that goal. There are schools that offer online learning and other districts that were able to return to educating. We need to develop our own systems and leverage their best practices. Remote education must involve teacher-led, small group for younger classes instruction and provide opportunities to interact. How are we going to design, fund, and plan for this requirement? How are we going to work and leverage the full community resources, not just the education that are within the education system? And like Dave, I commend everyone for all the hard work, all the hard choices and everything that have to been, have to have been made to date and all the ones that are coming. So I thank you.
Thank you very much. Colleen Lavarado?
I do not see Colleen on the call.
All right. So Steve, when it comes time to read them, will you add that, please? Great. And then last, I think here in person is Steve Gardner.
Hi. Steve Gardner from 20 Suncrest Ave here in Wilmington. So I want to talk specifically about special ed. Two of my children are involved in Wilmington's special ed. And for the most part, it has been an amazing experience. We've had people like Cherie Emmons and Tom McCray that have worked with my kids. And right out, I'll tell you that when my daughter's successful in life, I give Cherie Emmons a lot of credit for the program she developed for my daughter and the way she's made her, with her social emotional needs, just come along and function the way that she is. But I'm also very concerned. It's not a knock on teachers. They're given a, you know, an impossible hand to work with. Trying to teach kids remotely in general, never mind special ed kids. My son's also special needs, and it's been a miserable three months for these kids. With the anxiety and the other mental health issues my son has from his adoption, he was almost removed from our home these three months and placed into outpatient, outpatient placement. And it's not saying he was perfect before that, but this is where he messes with kids' heads. So what's going to be done in terms of these special ed kids that need the specialized attention? No matter how amazing these teachers are, they can't teach these kids, special ed kids remotely in their social emotional needs. You can't get that through a Zoom meeting. I'm worried and I'm scared for the, for my children and what's going to happen with them. And, you know, what can these teachers do? You know, we've had some Zoom, Zoom meetings and they look forward to it, but it's not, you know, they're not learning things. They're not, they're not progressing in their education. I also worry, you know, we're a two-parent family, working family. And for my wife to, or either one of us, but to stay home, we lose an income. So if we're doing remote learning, we're losing income in our family. Or we can't teach our kids properly. So, you know, this remote learning doesn't really work. I also worry about single-parent families. How is a single-parent family supposed to educate their child properly while still maintaining a job so they can pay for the basic things their children need? And, you know, these teachers in town do such a great job, but they're educated and they're trained as teachers. I can tell you now, if I was trying to teach my kids, it would be a failure. I, I don't have the gift of teaching. My wife is a teacher. She teaches at Abundant Life right in Wilmington. And for her, it's coming down to, can she teach next year and continue the, the occupation that she was called to and she loves? Or does she teach our children? Because you can't do both. Well, she can't teach her kindergarten class and give those kids at abundant life, everything that they need unless she neglects what our kids need. And she can't give our kids everything they need in an education unless she neglects her classroom. So I know, Dr. Brand, I emailed you earlier about my concerns and you did, you know, pass it up to the Department of Education or the, the state about it being their call, not yours. You know, and hope that as a representative of, of our town to the state, that, you know, these things could be heard by you and these concerns could be heard by you so that it could be something that, you know, maybe you could bring to the state or bring to the, the higher ups where it goes because in no disrespect to any teachers or any administration or really any of your school board members, with remote learning, we are failing our children. We're failing in the education that, that we need to give them. And again, that's not bashing teachers. They're doing the best they can with what they have. But you can't, a couple of Zoom meetings a week and sending them links to Brain Pop videos isn't going to teach our kids what they need. And we're setting them up for failure for, for a long time to come. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comment. You know, this is a very challenging time and we do appreciate the time and the energy and the thoughtfulness that all of you have put into your comments. And I know I speak on behalf of all of us when we do thank you for being here and offering them in person. I know that this is, this is a very difficult time and it's hard to come on to these meetings. So thank you. We, we're very appreciative. We do have some to read. Steve, are you ready? You need to unmute first, though.
Yeah, I probably would need to do that.
He definitely can't hear you.
All right. This first comment comes from Karen Briggs on 18 West Street. And in her comments, she writes, "On Thursday, a speaker at the Black Lives Matter event in Wilmington spoke about the lack of representation in both the school staff members and curriculum. One, what improvements can be made to the curriculum to highlight the history and contributions of Black people and other people of color? Two, what is being done to encourage a racially diverse staff in Wilmington schools?" And...
Thank you, Steve. Next, my list, well, I had Elizabeth Morgan, but I think if you have the Lavarado comment, since Colleen wasn't here, that might be next.
Sure. Let me do that next. All right.
Thank you.
All right. Well, she didn't, she didn't write in any comments because she was planning to attend.
Okay. Sorry about that. Thank you. Elizabeth Morgan?
Elizabeth Morgan. Let's see. All right. "I would like to compliment my, my fourth grade son's classroom and specialist teachers at the West for the creative lessons and activities that they have posted during remote learning. My other son's seventh grade explorer teachers have also provided a nice variety of activities. His Spanish teacher and unified arts teachers have also been engaging and responsive during remote learning. I'm interested in an update on the leadership at the middle school and who will be leading it during the 2020-21 school year. Since the delivery of education for all students across the state is uncertain at this time, it doesn't help to have uncertainty regarding the leadership at Wilmington Middle School. There has been a good amount of turnover with administration at the middle school during the past five years, and I find that very concerning. Thank you."
Thank you, Steve. Megan Bradford?
All right. And Megan Bradford?
"I would be very open to remote learning option for next year if masks and school distance guidelines do not change by September. Otherwise, I have all the resources ready to go to, go to make a plan for homeschool instead. Please consider remote learning as a full school, school year option for families. Masks are not an acceptable requirement."
Thank you, Steve. And last on my list, I have Sharon Scaramosa.
"Remote learning must be universally rolled out, recognized and executed in the same manner across the entire school district. Administration must provide clear expectations and guidance as it appears this has not been done. Teachers should be held accountable if they do not hold and execute daily remote learning sessions. Our children have suffered regressive consequences with their learning already. Middle school's remote learning has been horrendous. The three houses were allowed, I'm assuming, to be so varied to their approach to remote learning that it's been disheartening and unacceptable. Also, is there an update on the principal?"
And I believe that concludes the public comments.
Thank you very much, Steve. Thank you again for taking the time to be here in person. If you are here and made a comment, thank you for submitting your comments. Thank you for those out there who have sent emails to the school committee or to the superintendent as opposed to obviously using social media, which can be, which can be obviously tricky in situations like this. So please continue to reach out and I urge you to do the survey that will be sent out tonight and on our website where you'll have another opportunity to add your remarks and your experience with remote learning over the past few months. So thank you. If you're here, please stay. And if you need to go, we understand. We are going to move on to our next item of business, which is old business. Seeing none, we're going to move on to new business. Dr. Brand, that is a COVID-19 update.
Sure. Thank you again and good evening. There are a few items that are listed on the agenda for an update this evening as it relates to obviously this important topic and thinking about our current situation and where we are going forward to, to the fall. First up, item A, state reopening guidelines for the workplace. I thought it would be important to bring to the committee's attention as well as the community the important work that is transpiring as we speak at the Department of Education level. For those that may not be aware, there is a formal return to school working group that the Commissioner of Education has formed and put together. That group came together, if I remember correctly, the earlier part of May, I believe it was. And it's a, it's a very large group. It is representative of parents and guardians, state-level associations, school leaders, and safety and emergency planning personnel. And there are four specific areas that the forthcoming guidance from the department is expected to cover. Those four areas include physical and virtual learning environments, teaching and learning, operations and business services, and behavioral health and social and emotional learning. We're anticipating, we're anticipating that this guidance will be forthcoming very soon. I believe originally the target date was this week. I'm not certain if that still holds true, but there is a sense of eagerness and urgency, as you might imagine, around specifically what this guidance for reopening might include and how that becomes the framework for school reopening in the fall. So I did want to bring that to, to everyone's attention, that this is guidance that has not been put out yet. I'm understanding perhaps that there's a sense that districts have, some districts may have a plan in place. Some districts may be exploring what reentry or reopening looks like, but it certainly would be not in line with anything that the Department of Education has yet put out. So I did want to bring attention to that. Related to reopening, though, I'll just also return to this and make mention of the fact that at your last meeting, I shared with the community the plan to put into place our own group or advisory group around helping develop our plan for reopening with some degree of assumption that school resuming in the fall will look very different than typical. I'm very interested in and committed to also including stakeholders, all of our stakeholders. That would include the staff representation and parent guardians as well, too. And so with that, as mentioned, for that survey that's going to be going out this evening, there'll also be an invitation for interested parents or guardians to volunteer to help be a part of this, this group. Obviously, I think the interest will be high. I anticipate that it will be. We won't be able to take everyone, certainly, just for the size of the groups. But I do want the community to know that there's a commitment that I have to work collaboratively with our school leaders, our school committee members, and obviously our, our staff as well as parent guardians. So if you are interested, there's further information that will be in that email to which you can express your interest. The, the reopening guidelines more immediately for office environments are out, as some might be aware. Not schools, but office environments. And as you know, we, we do have a number of staff that work year-round in different offices, not just the Roman House, but in some of our buildings as well as, for example, student support services. We are working closely to follow what is called the mask safety standards for office spaces. Lots of documentation, as I think some are aware, on the state, the state website. We're utilizing those to formulate a plan to, to have where appropriate staff start to return. I think as the committee knows, we have had most everyone working remotely over the last number of months. And to everyone's credit and to Ken Lord's credit and his team who have provided the technology, that has helped enable things move on and keep the business of the district running as it has. And at least for the foreseeable future, I still see the support of remote learning to the extent that that's possible also happening. As some might be aware, there are some pretty strict standards around capacity in offices. I believe right now it's at 25%, of which office, offices should not exceed. So there are limitations, of course, in addition to the other safety standards that we, we will be closely following. Item C, just very briefly, student personal belongings update. I know I've mentioned this on a couple of occasions that when we suddenly paused and exited buildings back in mid-March, we had many situations where personal belongings of students were left in buildings and lockers and desks and so on. Thanks to the many, many volunteers of staff, those, those items have been gathered together, put into, I think mostly paper bags for pickup. And in fact, in many, if not all, by this point, across the district, many of our schools, parents and guardians have had the opportunity to pick those items up. And so if there are some still in place, that might be the case, but I think by this point, most have had the opportunity to pick up those items. And I want to again extend my, my sincere thanks to the many staff volunteers who helped make that possible. Finally, under COVID-19 listed on your memo on the agenda, I'm sorry, summer school and extended year program update. I do think that this is an important one to just take a little bit more time to provide some explanation around. Some may know that we have, what I understand, to be close to approximately 200 students who participate in an extended school year program here in the district, spanning all grades. And this particular summer, this presents a very interesting, obviously, challenge for us. There has been a number of pieces of guidance issued from the Department of Education around summer programming, knowing that many districts, if not all, are in a similar place of needing to provide services for some of their students. This, there has been a bit of a flip-flop, to be honest. I'm not sure a better word or phrase to explain it. Originally, the guidance was to specifically plan for remote, remote learning for these services. That very, very recently has changed somewhat in, in the encouragement of districts where it's possible to comply with, to be honest, a pretty extensive array of requirements, where it's possible to provide in-service or in-person extended year services. And, and so what you now have, not just in Wilmington, but from my understanding, most, if not all districts, is sort of a change of course here only very recently. And when I say recently, probably within the last week. So we are, we are working to put into place a plan that will start remotely out of necessity for the service delivery. And that will start on Monday, June 17. And that will start on Monday, June the 22nd, a week, a week Monday, with the intent to as quickly as possible put into place and make sure we can establish the provisions and respective guidelines that the state has put forth in order to be able to return staff and students to physical environments. When I say the list is long, it is. And it's far more than just the acquisition of PPE equipment. It's also establishing perimeters, more than six feet in some cases, around interactions with and between students, square footage limitations of, I believe, literally 144 square feet per student. So I don't mean to get too into the weeds, but only to say that the, the details are, 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 are deep and, and wide, and it's going to take some time to, to, to make sure that we can, can be compliant. So I do, there's a memo from Ms. Brown McGrand in your packet. It just recently went to our families who would have students in this program, the extended school year program. And if not for anything but interest sake, I also included the document from the Massachusetts Child and Youth Services regarding programs and the reopening approach, which for any member of the community who might be interested to learn more about what I'm specifically talking about, you can find that document within the school committee packet as well, too. And with that, that concludes the COVID-19 update for this evening, but I'm happy to take any questions if members of the committee have.
Thank you, Dr. Brand. Mr. Fenelly?
Just quickly, Dr. Brand, the, the child and youth service programs reopening thing that's in the, the packet, would that be made available on the website for folks who wanted to reference it, too?
Certainly, it's with, there's a link. Actually, no, I think that the entire document is up, if I remember correctly. And Tristan, you can correct me if I'm wrong. I think that we did upload that as a PDF. But did you mean as a separate standalone document? We certainly could, if that's what you're suggesting.
I, I think really all I was sort of suggesting or curious about was that if folks in the community wanted to see the document, how they would be able to access it?
Sure, sure. We do have it in the packet, right? Correct, Tristan?
That's correct, but it's not up on the website as its own document.
But, but to that end, we certainly can post it under, under the COVID-19 update for those that might be interested.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fenelly. Other questions or comments from the committee? Mr. Raxdale?
Regarding the state return to school working group that Dr. Brand mentioned at the beginning of his report, they are taking comments from the public. So anyone who wants to weigh in on what the state guidelines should be can send an email to RTSWG, which is just the letters for return to school working group, RTSWG@mass.gov. So if you have opinions about that, that you would like the working group to take into consideration, that is how, that is how you can submit comments to them. The other thing that I want to mention is that there's naturally a lot of concern and energy going into right now, figuring out the logistics of what school reopening will look like in the fall. Because we're starting to get a sense about what some of the requirements and limitations might be as far as spacing and PPE and protocols for masks or whatnot. But it's, I think, also really important that we use this time that we have between now and September to really also think not just kind of logistically and from a public health perspective about what school is going to look like, but not forget to really start thinking hard about educationally. How are we going to provide our kids with, you know, with a good educational pedagogy? How are we going to, you know, help teachers, give them, you know, the assets, the resources, the training in order to deliver effective instruction? We have now a little bit of, I mean, it's, the time is going to fly by, but we have a little bit of breathing time that we didn't have this spring to really think from an educational perspective about, you know, how are we going to teach kids effectively next year? And it's, I think, just, just as important as how are we going to be safe next year?
Thank you, Mr. Raxdale. Other comments or questions? Okay. All right. Thank you very much for the update. Our next update is food services. I think I see Mary Kaylin somewhere. Dr. Brand, would you like to start us off? Hi, Mary.
There, there she is. Well, I will thank you, Ms. Bryson. Mary is here and I'm not sure, she may have some company hopefully with her, but we've shared with you before the incredible success built upon incredible hard work by Mary and her staff over the last, really, I guess, two-plus months, I guess it's more now, where, like many other districts, one of the commitments to try and provide support for our students and families is a provision of food. There are lots of other districts as well who certainly are, have pursued this and, and we are no exception in Wilmington. However, I have to believe, I don't have the data to support this, but I have to believe we might be an exception in the area for the level of response and interest and participation in the provision of meals on Monday, Wednesday, and Friday for the last couple of months. It has only grown exponentially. And having myself had the, the privilege to visit on a couple of occasions, the beehive of work truly that's going on in the high school on Monday, Wednesdays, and Fridays to prepare hundreds of meals is absolutely incredible. And that includes both food services staff as well as some other volunteers, too. I've had the good fortune to be copied on a number of messages from members of our community on messages to Mary, and they are touching in terms of far more than perhaps some might think. The impact that this has had to provide some sense of normalcy, some sense of comfort, obviously a sense of nutrition to students and families in need. So we thought for maybe at least one last time, the opportunity to, to celebrate, acknowledge, and most importantly, thank Mary and her staff for the incredible work. I'll turn it over to Mary because I'm sure she has a few more things that might be helpful to provide you with. And then I think she's going to introduce some of the staff that are, are with her this evening. So Mary, take it away.
I popped up, I was able to. First, thank you so much. Yeah, thousands of meals prepared, thousands and thousands. Mr. Rogirio probably has numbers better than I do, but I think we're at around 75,000. Correct me if I'm wrong. Today, we put out, oh, let's see, 800 and 784 bags times four meals, whatever that math is, and then 300 fresh produce boxes, which has 20 pounds of fresh produce in it. The lunches, the meals, as you all know, are available to all students. It doesn't matter your level of income in the household. And from ages two to 21, so preschoolers, my littles. But anyway, it's all been great. It's been good. The staff has worked really hard. The custodians, huge help. My nurses that volunteer and help out, huge help. The staff, Mrs. Quigley was on a little while ago, Kathleen Quigley. She's one of the staff that come and help us distribute because it's just so many, many, many meals. And I'm very, 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 very happy to say tonight that we literally just a couple hours ago found out that we will be able to continue and get the funding, we're getting funding through August. So we were, we thought we were going to have to stop the first week in July, and we don't have to. We're going to August. Probably till mid-August, I think we'll need a little break by then to get ready and ramped up for the beginning of school. But starting next week, we will serve, distribute on Monday, Tuesday, and Thursday. And for the rest of the summer, it'll be Tuesdays and Thursdays. I have numerous staff who are rock stars on here. Not all my staff who have been helping are on here, but numerous. I see Jean Chavilla. She is like a lunatic in the kitchen whipping things up and thank goodness she'll be helping me out this summer. And I see Maureen Beraldi, Karen Kitchen, Michelle Pfeffer, Lisa Canoia, Kathleen Timmons. I mean, the list goes on and on. I can't even recognize everyone on here. Karen Bedrow, Faith Gronomai, I mean, the list just goes on and on and on, and Grace Nefaro. But I really, it's been great. We, you know, it's a lot of work, but we have fun. We really do have fun, so.
Mary actually has a short presentation that we put together with some pictures. So I'm going to share my screen. And Mary, if you wanted to talk about those and just let me know when to advance to the next slide.
Okay. So this is just some of the stuff we did during the year, long before March came along. Corn chucking with my fourth graders, not sure, for the first time next year. In 14 years, I don't know if I'll be able to do that one. Here's my Shaw Sheen School celebrating Valentine's Day. And here's the high school without milkman, which is a contest between us and Bereka because he likes us better because he wears a blue shirt and not the green shirt they do. Just so you know. And Dr. Brand was asking, and we, we do have really high numbers. And again, it's almost like a little contest with Bereka and Andover, my very good friends, because their enrollment is much higher than ours. So, you know, not really fair assessment. And that's, yeah, we like to have fun. You can move along, Tristan. Thanks, honey. Here's Michelle Pfeffer, my middle school kitchen manager. It's a lot of bagging, cupping, portioning, and then bagging again. And then here's my staff, literally, I think that's Kathleen Timmons, Lisa Canoia, and Faith Gronomai outside dishing out, if I'm not mistaken, hot tacos that day. This is what the walk-in looks like. It is filled from, you know, you can't have food on the floor, but it's literally filled all the way to the ceiling. I've taken over the home economics room, too. Well, consumer science, I should say, their fridge, their freezer, their workspace, just so we have more space to work in. And it's only around the corner from the kitchen, so it makes it very accessible. One of the lunches, just to give an idea of what we sent out, it was a chicken filet sandwich with seasoned wedges that day. And that was actually, it went out as a hot lunch. In the middle picture, they are cupping up taco meat to go home with either nachos, soft tacos, hot tacos. And in the last picture of the taco, which is hard for me to see because I can see people's faces on the side, that is either Lisa Canoia or myself as Willie the Wildcat. Yes, I put the costume on. Yes, I did. For like an hour and a half, I think. I was not the bunny rabbit on the Friday before Easter. That's Sheila Burke and Denise Novak. Those were colder days when we started in the beginning. That was in April. And we were pretty cold. And then, yep, and there's Lisa and Kathleen Timmons and my junior student who donned the bunny costume. Just one of the many, 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 many cards or emails that we have received from students, parents, and the community. It's, it's overwhelming.
Thank you so much, Mary. It's great to get a glimpse into, into the business of the school lunches. We, you know, we are so grateful for providing meals and normalcy and just some friendly faces for our children to see over the past few months. I know that for some, it's been just a good routine for them to just see familiar teacher or an administrator to, to feel as though they're not so far away from everyone. So you've done more than I think you can even imagine for, for the children of Wilmington and the parents and the families. So thank you. School committee members, would you like to say anything? Mr. Bjork?
I'd just like to say thank you to you and all of the staff for the amazing work that you've been doing year after year and especially during these last several months. And I will say that generally when you visit us at a school committee meeting, we enjoy some treats from the kitchen. I was kind of expecting to hear my doorbell ring, and I haven't yet. So that's a little disappointing, but it's, it's nice to see you anyway.
Mr. Samaha, did I see your hand? I'm sorry. Mr. Samaha?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, you know, amidst all of this craziness COVID-19 stuff, like this is just one of the greatest stories and it makes me feel really, really good and proud. And, and just thank you so much for, for this stuff. It's just, it's, it's one of the best things. Amazing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? I thought I saw one more. All right. Thank you very much, Ms. Mary Kaylin. Thank you, everybody who is here who has been working so hard for our, for our children. We just, it's impressive and we are delighted. And we thank you and wish you, I wish you, I was going to say, I wish you some time to relax, but now we actually, we can't wish you that until mid-August, which I think the community will be quite excited about. So I hope Robert Hayes is here somewhere and he catches that and tweets that out very quickly because I'm sure people will be, will be thrilled.
Oh, I'll, I'll put it out. Don't worry.
Excellent. Thank you so much, everyone. All right. Our next two items, we're just going to skip right over those, correct, Dr. Brand? Okay. Which brings us to item E, which is summer reading program. And I think, Dr. Wigan, are you going to start us off or no?
I, I can, if you like. It's really, it's really, it's probably Adam's work and but I will start by just thanking her and her teachers in English Department in, in Middle and High School for doing some thinking around this and, and for, for not sort of giving up on the idea of summer reading in light of all of this mess. And I, I think what you'll hear from her tonight, you're going to agree, is, is the right approach. It's, it's a great opportunity to continue to promote summer reading for what it really should be, which is to promote it for the pleasure of reading and for the joy of reading. So I think, I think we're, we're making some lemonade out of lemons here at the secondary level, anyway, with regard to that. So I'll, I'll turn it over to me to talk a little bit about specifics.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone. When we started the school year, I had commented back in September, we finally found a model for summer reading that worked and we're just going to keep it the way it is. And then March hit and we started to think about what we are going to do. We do recognize that access to books, we weren't sure when we started planning what that was going to look like, especially with libraries being closed at the time, stores being closed. Remote learning has really shown us a lot of issues of access and equity. So some middle school teachers had some success using an app called Hoopla that students sign up for through the library and it allows them to check out books at no cost. The nice thing about Hoopla is that it allows an unlimited number of people to check out a particular title. So for example, if 50 kids want to read one book, it's not like other app programs where you're stuck on a waiting list. We decided to prioritize looking at titles that could be obtained on Hoopla. And then as we started to discuss what we would want to do in the fall, given the uncertainty ahead of us and some changes, we thought we're going to make summer reading recommended but not required. Typically, we do spend some time at the start of the year going over summer reading, but we feel that we want to change our priorities focusing on building relationships, developing a class report in whatever format we're going to be approaching. So we did put together some recommended titles. We have separate lists for six, seven, and eight. And then we have a list of 16 books for students entering nine through 12 CP and honors. We do have required assignments for the two AP courses that we have. And the librarians, both at the Middle and High School, have taken a look at this. We've also contacted Wilmington Memorial Library for some feedback from them as well. So we're hoping that this will be an opportunity for students to check out some new titles. So we're hoping that this will be an opportunity for students to check out some new titles, read for fun, and discover some new books.
Great. Thank you so much. Um I'll just, I'll quickly start by saying the list of books are, are excellent as always. Um the titles are really include lots of genres and diverse characters. And so there's so much there, I think, that our students will really enjoy. I did see some optional assignments. Can you talk a little bit about that? I think for the middle schoolers or the high schoolers?
For the six, seven, and eight, and nine through 12, we do have note-taking guides, because we do know that some students like to process what they're reading. Some parents might want to uh give their children some additional support. So we do have some note-taking guides that are recommended ways that students can think actively about the book that they're reading.
Excellent. Thank you. Questions, comments from the school committee?
Ms. Ms. Bryson, can I add one? Can I add one more? I just, with Ms. Manish Shevitz isn't here tonight, but I, I wanted to just make note that as we have done in the past, we will work with the Wilmington Public Library for the younger grades and, and um help promote the summer reading program that they put forward. So I, I didn't want folks to think that that was not on the table uh as well.
Excellent. Thank you. Uh Mrs. Burns?
I just wanted to echo your sentiments. I, I always love this time of the year with regards to the book assignments um that are going on. And I, as you said, I've, I've always been impressed with the diversity of um the books being offered um to our students. That covers a myriad of personalities and interests and, but of a high caliber that they benefit um not just from the reading, but from, from expanding their mind and imagination. And um I just have to commend you for um the uh, the list of uh the books that were put out, because I think they're absolutely wonderful. And I, myself, I, I myself, I love it when I'm intrigued by some books, um titles and exploring, uh you know, that. So um I, I just wanna thank you very much for all that work. Um and thinking outside of the box and, you know, taking in consideration of our current um situation. Um so what, just a job well done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bagstow?
Uh, thank you very much for all of this material. I had a, a lot of fun just looking through the titles being offered and just thinking, oh, I should read some of these books. Um for a couple of mine, fortunately I have, but um it's a, they're great, great lists and great program. I'm hoping, can you um talk a little bit about finding the balance between um encouraging the, you know, the joy of reading and also teaching kids to, you know, be able to examine texts and analyze them and, you know, query what they're reading, especially looking at the dialectical journal. Um there's definitely some uh kind of, you know, intense work there. And uh I know that that's always, there's always a little bit of a balance of teaching kids to be, you know, good readers who can really probe a text, but also teaching them just to, you know, enjoy a love of reading. Um can you talk a little bit about how you've found those types of tools to actually work?
I think the beauty of dialectical journals is that it gives students an opportunity to find moments in a text that are worth noting and discussing and delving into. I think that's part of, for those of us who really love books, we do enjoy that suspension of getting involved and wrapped up in a story, but there's also something to be said for appreciating what authors are doing, looking at um turns of phrase, looking at word choices, looking at the development of themes across a book. That also is a form of appreciation that we're hoping to encourage students to, to take on.
Are you all, is that David? Are you good?
Oh, yeah. No, that's good. Thank you.
Wait, I'm sorry. I'm just making sure. Okay. That's excellent. Thank you so much. Uh any other comments or questions? Any other last push you'd like to do to encourage our families to um engage in summer reading once summer officially hits?
I will say there are many great titles available on Hoopla that aren't on the list, and there are a lot of ways of searching genres. So um by all means, take a look at what's out there. A lot, a lot of great books. I know that a lot of students have books at home as well that are worth perusing as well. The bottom line is, we just want students to read the summer.
Do you have a suggested time? I usually say 30 minutes a day. Is there a suggested time you would throw out there to families?
Some students might struggle with 30 minutes. 15 is often a good place to start. A lot of people who do sustained silent reading will start with 15-minute inter uh intervals. And you might find at the end of 15 minutes that you need to keep going or you need to read that next chapter, which is fantastic.
Excellent. Thank you very much for your time. We appreciate it. And we encourage all of our families and kids to read as much as you can this summer.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right. Next, we have first reading of school committee policies. J C A C through J F E B, school choice. And so actually going to, I'm gonna pull mine up. I don't have that on my screen just yet. So if someone from the committee, either Mr. Fenelly or Mr. Bagstow can get us started. That would be great.
Sure. So the primary policy that we spent the most time looking at is the very first one that we have up there. So that is, I think I just opened it there. Uh the residency policy. So that was the, the main focus. Um and where we, where we, you know, had, had the most thoughts, most edits, and spent the most time thinking. Um that uh earlier this year, um we had realized that we really didn't have uh a solid set of residency policies and that that was something that, you know, we wanted to, wanted to put in place um to make sure that uh the people who are attending school in Wilmington reside in Wilmington. And uh so we spent some time looking through this model policy. You can see the red line um which shows where we felt that we wanted to make a few adjustments. Um but I'll just say that that's, that's kind of where we began with the model residency policy and then made some changes to it, um which you can see in the red lines. So if there's some other questions, we can talk about why we thought that these changes were useful ones.
Thank you, Mr. Bagstow. Mrs. Burns?
Thank you. You know my love of policy. Um I had just two comments that I wanted to share specifically about this policy. Um one of which, which is the um, and I, I'd like to try to get, I guess, additional clarification. Under the procedure for collection of Wilmington proof of residency, um I'm not in disagreement, especially with the first line. But with regards to the second one, as it applies to the committee may choose to have a full school system compliance check, a grade level check, or they may even skip a year. Um I think that should remain within the policy. Um granted, I, I would foresee this as something upon the superintendent's recommendation. But since residency directly impacts our budget and, and cost per student and our ability to provide that education for our students, should a need arise where the school, school committee feels action needs to be met, I think it needs to be clearly s- stated as, as the uh, you know, in a, in a fiscal sense, that we do have a responsibility uh to protect that, you know, those monies for the students, uh the residents of Wilmington. Um so that was just my initial thought on that. I'm, I'm happy to hear an expansion of what the uh subcommittee felt. And just part two, um if I'm, if I'm, you wanna comment to that, I can, the only other one is a small one with regards to the reporting hotline that was deleted. I think that was um great. Uh but I do think we need a me- um a methodology of reporting that would guide residents. Um or, and I would say residents, um as to where that reporting needs to um send to. Who do you report to? You know what I mean? Uh whether it be the central office, the super, you know, the office of superintendent or whatnot. But I think there's, there's guidance that does need to be um stated in some capacity within this policy. Um as it pertains to reporting and, and how, and where someone should report, if that's, that does become the case.
Thank you, Mrs. Burns. So first, we'll take a look at the red line. Each May, the school committee will vote. Someone at the subcommittee want to address that or Mr. Rogério or Dr. Brand?
Well, when we first, the, the reason that we wanted to strike that as it was written is that we didn't think that we wanted to have a formalized annual vote, the way it was described, you know, each May, we will vote on who will have to reprove residency. So that on an annual basis, there's an official school committee vote that this year, all the seventh grade will, you know, have to reprove residency or all of the north or any, anything, you know, in that regard. Uh we were not against uh the idea of there being some kind of regular check. I think that um in the, in the subcommittee meeting, we discussed whether this is something that we want to just put in as a naturally reoccurring policy, that every so many years there is a, you know, a residency check, rather than it being something that um requires an annual school committee vote. Um because it's also hard to imagine what exactly information would we hear and discuss in uh, in a school committee meeting that would then lead us to go one way or the other, um as far as whether we did like a whole system check or just a grade or just a school.
Mrs. Burns?
Oh, okay. So I, I'm certain, I'm certain, uh certainly in agreement with regards to the um annual or each May um timeline. I, I certainly agree with that. Um and, and again, the first sentence, I have no problem in striking with, without question. But I think the second one, however it needs to, if, however it could be revised, I, I still think that you know, if we start getting, if there is information, you know, we start getting reports, I, I think um you know, as the fiscal governing body, it, it is our duty to, you charge the superintendent to request, you know, um a, a compliance check, now whether it be grade um or school or, you know, however that wants to, I, I prefer to keep that a little bit loose, however, wherever the need may um arise. Uh again, I, I foresee that action to come directly from the recommendation of the superintendent. I don't anticipate having it really be a board discussion per se, um other than there, there's been a number of reports that it may be something reasonable to institute. I would leave as to how, um where and what, you know, um that information is coming from. I would leave that to the superintendent to determine where those complacency checks need to be met. It may not be a bad idea to do it every five years or every 10 years, um just so that we, we know, you know, we're all, you know, it's our, it's public monies that, you know, govern us. And um I, I just think that there's some, I don't want to make it more than what it is, but I think there is some role that we play with regards to the fiscal piece that this is tied into. Um it, but um, so that's kind of where um I just thought I, you know, present that to the subcommittee for further, you know, consideration and or um thought.
Okay. So I think we'll have to take this back to the subcommittee to talk through some of those pieces. Does anyone want to add anything about this particular policy before we review it again as a subcommittee? Mr. Samaha, thank you.
Yeah, I just, I'm ju, I'm curious what, I, I didn't see any um, any reference to um, to MASC or M A S C um on here and sort of what they recommend in terms of a policy like this. So I mean, I, I don't need an answer now. I just think that when the subcommittee meets that they should look into that as well, maybe adding a reference to that if MASC has anything.
Believe they do, but I'm, I can't, I'm not gonna pull it up right now. So we'll bring it back and then we will, unless David or Jesse remembers off. Okay. So we'll bring it back. Thank you very much. All right.
Oh, and what, um actually, before we leave this, Jen, there is, um MJ had a second question about, about the, about the hotline. And
She'd like some kind of a mechanism. So obviously not the hotline, which I think was pretty unanimous in the subcommittee. And then, but some way, some mechanism. So we should go back and revisit that. Did you want to add anything else?
Uh no, I think, I, I remember we did discuss that um, that the people who, you know, who, who believe that there are people violating the residency policy usually contact either the principal or the superintendent. But I think it would be fine to put something uh formal about that in the policy that simply says that anyone who has information uh may contact their principal or the central office, just so there is a, a formality of the reporting mechanism.
Absolutely. I agree. Thank you. All right. So we'll bring that one back. The next one I see is J F A B D. Is that what y'all see? Is that right? Yeah. Any questions or comments on this policy? Okay. All right. So that'll come back for a second read next time. Many screens open.
Jen, I'm sorry.
Yeah?
I had, I had one minor, it um, under this, I think, transportation.
This is on J F A B D homeless students, that one?
Yes.
Okay.
I made a note and now I'm, I'm, I'm here, you know, reverently looking for where, I, there was, I think, one word, students that needed to be pluralized and um I may be, I may have.
I can look at it and edit, just an edit?
Yeah, but it's just one little word in the, in the bulk of it. So it's really not a major thing.
All right. I'll, I'll double check it to make sure it's ready for next week.
Thank you.
Or not next week, our next meeting. Thank you. All right. Brings us to J F A B E. Questions or comments? Educational opportunities for military children? We're good? All right. Tristan, that'll come back for a second read next time. Next, we have J F A B F. Educational opportunities for children in foster care. Comments or questions? Nope. All right, great. That'll come back for a second read at our last meeting. J F B B, school choice. Questions or comments? Seeing none. That will come back for a second read at our last meeting. Okay. I'm sorry, I can't see you all, because I have a lot of screens open. So just stop me if I'm moving too quickly. We good? Okay. All right. That brings us to item number 10, other reports. Subcommittee reports. The superintendent evaluation subcommittee is meeting tomorrow afternoon from one to three via Zoom. Do the, the subcommittee members have that marked down? Excellent. So I will see, we'll see you there. Any other subcommittee reports? Mrs. Burns?
Thank you. Um I sent out through email, um and thank you, Tristan, for being so quick with adding it um up on our drives with regards to um a resolution that is circulating through the M A S C list server. It was initially um written um in uh, right, uh several school committee members uh from various towns and committees um got together to create this draft. Um but it's Peter Demming from the MR School Committee who has sent it to M A S C for their district distribution. Um basically what this resolution calls for, and it's in a draft format, I did bring it forth for discussion, is the um state funding for um P P, for, excuse me, the state funding for all COVID-19 expenses um in order to go back to school in the fall. Um as you know, the state um, and I might not say this as eloquently, I mean, Mr. Agstow, I'm sure can expand upon it. Um the state will not be funding, uh will not be financing um any P P E masks, gloves. Anything that, that may be attributed for us to be able to get back into um the fiscal learning environment. So this resolution and M A S C is also taking up the charge and advocating for um the sim, a similar, um if not the same. To have the state funded. It's an unfunded mandate. Um and certainly with regards to the, the uncertain fiscal future we are headed into, I can't see how school districts would be able to um financially be able to find, to, to, to meet this one aspect up under the guidelines. Um with regards to how masks are supposed to be switched out, um gloves, I mean, you're going through, you're gonna, you're gonna go through hundreds and hundreds. Um it's also an expense uh to families, um because, you know, those re, even with the It's also an expense to families because, you know, those, even with the recyclable ones, those have to be washed. So that, you know, families need to make sure that they have clean ones every day. I also, and I also think that this unfunded mandate, should it, should it continue, would actually impact us being able to deliver fate as we should. As it is, it's difficult enough to, as we've seen, to deliver education in a remote learning environment and nothing can replace a classroom. But to not be able to simply go back to those physical classrooms because we can't over a period of time be able to fiscally purchase, you know, tools and resources, you know, that is specifically driven by this health crisis, public health crisis, I think compromises all the work Dr. Brand and his team are doing with trying to get our kids as long as the state guidelines allow, allow us back in, you know, and staff as well, back into the classrooms. So it is my request of the board this evening, and I hope you, you had some small opportunity to read, it's really not that, that long, to think about how we, but supporting this. I would like to send it to the, I did mark it up as for discussion, simply. Any contributions you'd like to add, we can certainly edit it to our will, but I would like to send it to Governor Baker and the Secretary of Education, or Education James Pizer, Commissioner of Education Jeffrey Riley, Senate President Karen Spelka, House Speaker Robert DeLeo, as well as copying our Senator Bruce Tarra and House Representative David Robertson on this, as well as Wilmington's Board of Selectmen, because I think they too would be wonderful allies to help.
MJ, I lost you. We still can't hear you. Am I right? Oh, sorry. Clear your eye. I couldn't hear you.
Internet connection issues. Only happens when I talk. But I'd like to advocate on behalf of the board to Senator Tarra and Representative Robertson to really drive this home. So that's, that's my, my position right now. So.
Thank you so much for drafting this. Are there questions or comments or edits?
Or even thoughts?
Mr. Samaha and then Mr. Agstall?
Um, thank you. And, uh, uh, thank you, Mrs. Burns, for, for bringing this, for bringing this up. I haven't had a chance to really think about this in, in any sort of, I'll say, deep way, but on a surface level, I think this makes a lot of sense. And I would, and I would support it. But, you know, I, I definitely need to do some more thinking about what all of it means. But my, my first reaction as I read it yesterday was that this, or earlier today, this, this makes a whole lot of sense. And thank you for bringing up the idea of fate. I think that's a really important part of all of this. When we think about that, you think about equity. You know, I know one of the things is, you know, kids are having, you know, every family has to have the kid bring their own mask. And how do you regulate? So there's a lock, there's a lock going on here. And so thank you for bringing this up. And at, at first glance, this makes a lot of sense to me.
Thank you, Mr. Samaha. Mr. Agstall?
I have one small edit, which is to add Representative Gordon to the CC list in addition to Senator Tarra and Representative Robertson.
Of course, but thank you so much.
And, but in, but after, beyond that, I, I definitely support this. One of the things that, that we are already contending with is the purchasing requirements. DESI has issued documents and guidance to districts about the equipment that they expect districts to need to purchase for safe reopening in the fall. And while they are trying to help out by, you know, using some of the power of the state and just the general, you know, acquisition of large scale orders and give districts access to some of the state buying power, it is still going to be up to the districts right now to pay for it. DESI, you know, has no funds to pay for P P E for districts. And so if, if any money is going to come from that, then it has to come, you know, it has to be appropriated. It has to come from legislative bodies. There are actually, I, I should say that there are a few grants, grants that are being made available. So I, I think that we and many other districts can apply for some grant money for P P E. But generally speaking, you know, this money has to be appropriated by legislative bodies. And so I, I am in support of this.
Thank you, Mr. Agstall. Other comments? I see some, some nods. Mr. Fenelly?
Sorry, I lost my mouse and I couldn't find my mute button. I'm inclined to agree with Mr. Agstall. I think, I think this makes a lot of sense. And MJ, thank you for putting it together so quickly. But to, to Mr. Samaha's point, I'd be okay with, you know, if folks wanted to take till the next meeting to digest it, I wouldn't necessarily disagree with that. But I support sending this forward. I think it makes a lot of sense.
Thank you. Mr. Bjork?
Uh, yeah, I would just say that I also offer my support. Not much else needs to be said that hasn't been said. So just stop for my support.
Thank you. Mrs. Newhouse?
I offer my support as this as well. I agree, we can't, it would be tough to have an unfunded mandate with this going into the next fiscal year, especially already looking at the cuts that we've had to make.
Thank you. I too support this resolution, MJ. So I think, um, doesn't sound like we need more time. If anyone has a change of heart, let us know. But I think that it sounds as though you're, you can send it.
Well, I, I am, you know, I, I certainly want to give, granted, this was just produced and posted on Monday. So I think giving it, we're meeting in two weeks?
Yep, the 24th.
Okay. Let me just throw this out to Mr. Samaha and Mr. Fenelly. I had my intention this week to reach out to Representative Robertson anyway to find out what the status is as to where the legislature is going, is addressing the state budget. Typically it closes by July 1st. A little, I'm just, I, I mean, I think we could have the time because it's June 24th, I think, is our next meeting, that if everyone would be ready at that point to vote on it because it would require a vote since, as I said, I would like to also speak on behalf of the board and I can't do that without agreement of all members. I would still be advocating, but I think it would be, it would beho, behoove us on this particular topic if I, if I, and Jesse too, I, I certainly don't want to exclude, you forgive me, Jess, to be able to advocate for all board members and not just individually, especially on something that is a, can be considered an unfunded mandate. So, so thoughts, Jen?
Um, I, I wonder if there's a motion now, actually. We'll see if there's a motion in a second and then we can vote on it now, just because I think the sooner this goes out, probably the better, as opposed to waiting until the beginning of the summer months. But is there a motion to accept the, Mrs. Burns?
I would like to motion, I would like to make a motion to accept this resolution with the edit of adding Representative Ken Gordon to, um, this resolution to have the state fund COVID-19 expenses.
Is there a second? Mrs. Newhouse, all in favor? It's unanimous.
Great. Thank you so much, folks. I will, I'll make that edit and I'll, I'll send it out either by tomorrow or Friday, the latest.
Excellent.
Thank you very much.
All right. Item 11 is correspondence. MJ, any correspondence? Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Agstall?
Just before we leave, subcommittee reports. I, I don't remember if we have mentioned this in, in an open meeting. So I, I just want to say that the school start time committee did continue to meet throughout the school closure via, via Zoom meetings. But it was determined that the report that was originally scheduled to be delivered to the committee basically by the end of the school year, that it would make more sense to hold on that until the fall, that some additional work would happen over the summer. I know it's hard to think about school start times and what we originally imagined that would be the way that we're now thinking about starting school in September. But that the, the work of that committee continues and that it is still planning to have a report on options for the following school year, for the 2122 school year, for us to look at in the fall, for us to gather information and feedback from the community and still be able to hopefully move forward with that, with that project.
Excellent. Thank you for that update. Any other subcommittee reports? Correspondence? Mrs. Burns?
None this, none this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Future school committee dates, we have June 24th is our last, maybe, maybe not, regular meeting. At 7:00 PM, also Zoom. And then I do see July meeting to be determined. So we do have spoken to Dr. Brand. We do anticipate that we will need to meet throughout the summer due to our current situation and, and the need for reopening guidelines and everything that's going to be released. So we will try and keep it as consistent as possible, but I just wanted to, to put that out there so that you're not surprised when, when those invitations arrive. June 27th is town meeting. On the agenda, it says 10:30, but actually it was a time change today to 9:00 AM. So it's June 27th at 9:00 AM. And then I just wanted to thank, many of you were there at graduation on Sunday and it was a lovely day. I wanted to thank Linda Peters and her extraordinary team of graduation planners. Those of you who were able to attend saw the lovely decorations, the festive atmosphere and a well-deserved recognition for the class of 2020. Thank you also to all who participated in celebrating our seniors and for the many parent guardian volunteers to organize signs, flags, bouquets, and to WOW for spearheading the senior parade last Saturday. And a final congratulations to the class of 2020. Anything else before we adjourn? Okay, seeing nothing. Um, is there a final motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Bjork, second, Mr. Fenelly, all in favor? That is unanimous. Thank you, everyone, for being here. It's nice to see you all. Good night.